Okay, it is by thirty, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll begin with invocation. Andrew, can you help us with that?
Yep.
Don, we'd like to ask you for guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that will impact our community for the foreseeable future. And with your guidance and wisdom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the public, to the people, to our nation, to the law, to the law, to the law. To the justice for all.
Okay, for the benefit of those that unfortunately can't be in their room today, I would like to go over the meeting procedures. The public may address a specific agenda item at the pleasure of the mayor if recognized by the mayor. Please state your name and address and limit remarks to three minutes or less. Out of respect to city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or mayor. An individual in violation will be declared out of order. Roll call. Can you help me out there, Don?
Yes, Missley.
Here.
Backenstoss.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Lucas. Lee.
Here.
Carmen.
Here.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Here.
Alright, um, open meetings act, they're gonna call the open meetings act on the ground is posted on the wall in the council chambers and the conference room. We'll go ahead and start with a consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. Item number one is approved minutes of May fifth, twenty twenty. That's pages one through seven. Item number two, approved mayor's reappointment of Bill McGann for a second term to the housing authority board. His term expires May of twenty twenty five, and that's on pages eight through nine. Item number three, approved mayor's reappointment of Rob Stepka to the community redevelopment authority board. His term expires in twenty twenty five, pages ten through eleven. And item number four, approved mayor's reappointment of Julie Jacobson to the city tree board. This will be Mrs. Jacobson's first term after filling Mr. Nelson's term. Her term expires in May of twenty twenty three, and that's on pages twelve through thirteen. Item number five, approved mayor's reappointment of Deloitte Young to the Cody Scout Commission. His term expires in May of twenty twenty five, and that can be found on pages fourteen through fifteen.
We do approve items one through five to consent agenda. Second.
Second.
Roll call, Don.
Missley.
Yes, Rob, hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Hi.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Hi.
A regular agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, motion passes. And Don, could you, could you repeat the votes? Is that six zero? Is that correct?
Yes.
If you can do that, I'll need to vote. There was other people that can't hear this. Apparently, would like to know what the final votes were.
I will do that.
Thank you, Don. Item number six on the regular agenda is a public hearing in action regarding adopting ordinance number four zero three six for amendment to chapter one fifty one Housing Maintenance and Occupancy Code Sections one fifty one point zero zero one through one fifty one point nine 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 of the municipal code of the city of North Platte relating to adoption of the twenty eighteen International Property Maintenance Code, and that can be found on pages sixteen through forty nine.
Mayor Livingston, would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
In the ordinance of the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, amending chapter one fifty one Housing Maintenance and Occupancy Code Sections one fifty one dot zero zero one through one fifty one dot nine 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 relating to adoption of the twenty eighteen International Property Maintenance Code, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for an effective date and publication thereof in pamphlet form.
And I would like to remind everyone, this is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak. Not hearing anyone? Andrew?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Thank you.
Shannon's here.
Okay. Oh, sorry. I think there was a motion to close public hearing. Was there a second? Okay, Don, would you be so kind as to take roll call?
Missley.
Sorry, Don.
Hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Hi.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Don. Public hearing's been closed. Well, that was for the public hearing, Don.
Yeah.
Public hearing's closed.
I now move the four thousand thirty six for amendment to chapter one fifty one of the Housing Maintenance and Occupancy Code Sections one fifty one point zero zero one through one fifty one point nine nine zero of municipal code of the city of North Platte relating to adoption of the twenty eighteen International Property Maintenance Code.
Second.
Roll call.
Missley.
Hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Hi.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Don. Item number.
I just have a question. This is on the ordinance. Is this the first of three readings?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the first of three readings.
Yeah, yes, yes. Alright, sorry about that. We'll move on to item number seven. authorize a mayor to sign the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant application request for thirty six thousand two dollars and required certified assurances.
We authorize the mayor to sign the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant application to request for thirty six thousand two dollars and required certified assurances.
Second.
Questions that would like me to address?
Yes, sir, if you'd be so kind.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Mayor Council. Dan Hudson, Chief of Police, North Platte Police Department. Thank you, sir. Dan Hudson, Chief of the North Platte Police Department. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. What this grant is, is the DOJ grant that the city of North Platte, North Platte Police Department was awarded thirty six thousand and two dollars as part of a much larger grant, and this grant is for coronavirus-related either to buy equipment, to pay for overtime, to fund additional things that were above beyond what we needed for the grant. As we've looked through the, through this entire process, as we've, as we've kind of tried to figure out how, what we need to do operationally, our biggest problem has been, our biggest concern has been our dispatch center. Our dispatch center, we currently, the North Platte Police Department dispatches nine one one calls for the North Platte Police Department, the North Platte Fire Department, the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department, the Gothenburg Police Department, and then six other additional rural fire departments, as well as priority medical from the hospital and the hospital helicopter and stuff like that. As we, as we looked at our operations, it was a matter of trying to compartmentalize, to separate our employees, because as everyone comes to work every day, they, they work in a beautiful state-of-the-art dispatch center, but we'll have three or four dispatchers in there at a time. If one of those dispatchers were to test positive for COVID nineteen, all people that they'd had direct contact with would be required to quarantine for up to fourteen days. As we, as what we would have in the dispatch centers, we would have overlapping shifts. We'd have employees having contact with different shifts where if one of those employees had came down with COVID nineteen, our entire dispatch system would go, and we don't have a fallback system. Our contingency plans in the past had always been for if a tornado took out our dispatch center, if a tornado or high winds took out antennas or floods and stuff like that, but the policy then was we have agreements with other dispatch centers for us to put nine of our people in a van and drive them to Carney or drive them to another location where we could dispatch from that location. We'd never considered not having any people. So as we looked at this and tried to figure out, how do we separate our people? Carney PD is very lucky because they have three separate dispatch centers, and in doing so, what they've done is because of floods in the past, they have different standalone centers at different locations, so they can put three different dispatchers in three different locations and never have contact with each other. We don't have that ability. If we were to purchase two separate standalone centers that we have now in our dispatch center, we're looking over five hundred thousand dollars. So what this part of the grant is, we're actually requesting for two different grants. This one is about thirty six thousand dollars, and it, it's called a box in a phone, or a phone in a box. And what we would do is purchase two of these, and it would allow us to take all this computer equipment, plug it into a secure internet site or plug it into a good internet site, and then there's some security that comes with it. And then what we would be able to do from any location is answer North Platte nine one one calls. We could be here in this building, we could be at the fairgrounds in a trailer, we could be at city hall, we are the county courthouse, we could be in, literally in your basement, answering nine one one calls as they would come into our center. So with that, it would allow us to separate our personnel. It would also allow us in the future to be able to, if in case of a catastrophe at our center, it would give us two additional phone service backups. So that's what this portion of the grant is. There's another item on here for a different grant that would, would answer the radio portion, but this, this again allows us to separate our personnel to ensure that the safety and the continuity of operations for our dispatch center. Is there any questions?
I suppose, Jim, Carmen.
Yes, sir.
How does, uh, how does the governor's role play into this in terms of when he, uh, no longer requires perhaps in sometime in the future distancing and some of these other measures that he's put out there? With that, if, if he starts opening things up in Nebraska, would that, wouldn't that give us some some relief at some point in the future?
Well, I, I think, great question. I, I believe that we don't know the answer to that, because even with the, if the governor opens things up with the health directive, let's say it's allowed to expire on the first. Does that mean if someone tests positive that they're still not going to be required to quarantine? So as long as people are going to be required to quarantine, we have to figure out a way to separate employees, because once one infected employee has contact with another employee, that, that entire works section is, has to be quarantined. So when, just the fact that they're opening up, that people can go out and, and participate in their everyday lives, we still have concerns as far as if there was to be a virus in our work environment. The police department and the fire department are unique in the fact that we have to have a continuity of operations. We can't just turn off the lights, lock the doors, and say, we'll see you in fourteen days. We still have to have police officers come. We still have to have firefighters come. We still have to have dispatchers. Nothing in the county moves on a nine one one level without our dispatch center. So it's just a matter of keeping that operation going. We've done a lot of things with just our, our patrol operations, our detective operations, to ensure that we're not going to have a cross-contamination where we could lose the entire department. So the question is, I guess the answer is, we don't really know, because as long as that fourteen-day quarantine is still going to be in effect, we're still going to be required to keep people somewhat separated.
Thank you.
And also, again, this isn't just something that the police department would utilize. This, this is for our fire department. This is for our, all of our EMS. This is for priority medical. This is for everybody that we dispatch for would benefit from this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. I believe we have fourteen seconds. Any other discussions? Roll call, Don.
Missley.
Hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Hi.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Don.
Item number. This is authorize a mayor to sign the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant application request for a hundred and three thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and required certified assurance.
We authorize the mayor to sign the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant application request for a hundred and three thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and required certified assurances.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is the second part of this grant. The city, the department was awarded the thirty six thousand and two dollars. We're guaranteed that money for the most part. We've been specifically, that money's been locked us. The crime commission has another three million nine hundred thousand dollars to distribute throughout the state for coronavirus-related incidents or issues. So what we've done is we've put the grant together, which will be for, it was a hundred and three thousand seven hundred and four, little under a hundred and four thousand. This is the radio component of, the first part of the thirty six thousand was the telephone component. This hundred and four thousand basically is for the radio component. The radios, it's more expensive, it's, it's motorola equipment, but it has to be able to be encrypted, it has to be able to touch the state radio system, and and there's some other requirements that we have to have with that. So we're hoping that we, we will present a, a be able to explain the need to the state, the crime commission to fund this also. If, if this weren't to be funded, we would, we could answer nine one one calls here. We'd have to route stuff back through probably the Carney Dispatch Center or another dispatch center to utilize their radio systems. We're hoping that we would be awarded this grant, and then if, if awarded this grant, that would give us two total complete standalone nine one one dispatch centers or stations that we can, a, again, we could put it in a trailer at Nebraska Land Days, we could put it in this building, the library, someone's basement. We would be able to stand up two additional nine one one dispatch centers if we have both of these equipments. So this grant is just the, the radio side of, of our communication side, and that would allow us to talk to fire trucks, police cars, everything that we can do for the most part out of our nine one one center, we'd be able to do if we have both of these systems in place.
Chief, is there a timeline on this particular grant, when you'll get it or send it in and find out if you got it?
The grant has to be submitted by the end of the month. I think it was actually May thirty first is when we have to submit the grant. We've got all the paperwork, and we're waiting for the signatures, then we will submit the grant today. Nothing would, we would not move forward with anything until the grant is funded. It would be no money that we would not, our plan is not to go out and purchase equipment and then wait for two years for the grant to fund. So it's, it's the assurance that the, the equipment will be purchased once the grant is funded, but we don't know exactly how long. It's our understanding that the crime commission has the money, and they will be looking at stuff once the September or the May thirtieth deadline passes by, but it's, it's bureaucracy, and you just don't know, and they're probably, I'm sure they're gonna have a lot of people submitting different funds, so we're not sure exactly when we would expect funding.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Roll call.
Missley.
Hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Hi.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
And thank you, folks. We, the North Platte Police Department, or always appreciate your continued support, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number nine, discuss and consider action on referring of light and substandard study. Light study heard through the city planning commission prepared by Marvin Fanning Consultants LLC for a public hearing to determine if the proposed area qualifies as substandard and lighted.
Move that we move to have the light and substandard study sent to the North Platte.
Second. Roll call.
Missley.
Hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Hi.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Don.
Item number ten, this is a second reading and action on ordinance number four zero three five to create paving district number eight three five on Reed Avenue from Oak Street to Spruce Street and Spruce Street from Reed Avenue to Philip Avenue in the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Mayor Livingston, would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
An ordinance for the creation of paving district number eight thirty five on Reed Avenue from Oak Street to Spruce Street, Spruce Street, also Spruce Street from Reed Avenue to Philip Avenue in the city of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, to ordering the construction of street improvement therein.
I move that we adopt ordinance number four thousand thirty five on second reading.
Second.
Any questions? Brent, did you want to speak?
I spoilt my pen.
Okay. Okay, roll call.
Missley.
Hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Hi.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you. Brent, thank you. Item number eleven, third reading and action to approve ordinance number four zero three four to create a clean energy assessment district to establish definitions to provide the financing administration and collections to promote energy efficiency improvements and renewable energy systems.
Mayor Livingston, would you like me to read the ordinance?
Yes, please.
In the ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Platte, Nebraska, to create a clean energy assessment district to establish definitions to provide for the financing administration and collections to promote energy efficiency improvements and renewable energy systems and to provide the effective date hereof and published in pamphlet form.
I move to read out ordinance number four thousand thirty four on third and final reading.
Second. Roll call.
Missley.
Hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Hi.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Don. Item number thirteen, resolution proving claims and authorizing the issuance of two warrants to Paulson Inc. in amounts of three hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-one cents. And, oh.
Item twelve.
They skipped twelve? Let me back up. Sorry about that. We'll start over. We'll move backwards to item twelve. And that is resolution providing the designation of First National Bank of Omaha as a warrant lender authoring the execution and delivery of a warrant purchase agreement with such designated warrant lender and referring to incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number three eight seven four relating to warrant financing.
I move that we designate First National Bank of Omaha as a warrant lender, authorizing the execution, delivery of a warrant purchase agreement with such designated warrant lender and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number thirty eight seventy four relating to warrant financing.
Second. Roll call.
Missley.
Hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Hi.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Don. Now, item number thirteen. Resolution proving claims and authorize the issuance of two warrants to Paulson Inc. in the amount, in the amounts of three hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-one cents and fifty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-six cents. A warrant to Midland's Contract Inc. in the amount of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents. A warrant for, to Myers Construction Inc. in the amount of nineteen thousand sixty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Two warrants for Everett Falkman in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars each, and fifty-nine warrants to the First National Bank of Omaha totaling seven million one hundred and twenty-four thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-three cents to pay approved claims and referring to incorporating the terms and condition of ordinance number three eight seven four relating to warrant financing passed and approved on May twenty first of twenty thirteen.
I move that we approve item number thirteen.
Second. Roll call.
Missley.
Hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Hi.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Don.
Item number fourteen, city's board equalization, city, city is board of equalization and improved schedule of benefits for water connection district number twenty-one. East Sixteenth Street and Taff to Brian.
We set as the board of equalization to approve the scheduled benefits for water connection district number twenty-one.
Second.
Anything you want to say on this one?
Um, I don't think there's any. Brent Berkland, city engineer. Brent Berkland, city engineer. We went through, this was one of the models for adjusting the staff summary, and so we went through and identified all of the contact periods in there, including that on the future staff summaries, but this was a project that was constructed by Municipal Light and Water and it's a connection district, and I think it went fairly smoothly, and all three persons that were assessed received a, we received a certified letter of signature that they received this documentation, so we have all three of them here that they received their certified mail on the assessment for the connection.
Missley.
Hi.
Backenstoss.
Hi.
Peterson.
Hi.
Lucas. Lee.
Hi.
Carmen.
Aye.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Item number fifteen, claims.
Would we pay the claims?
Second.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Missley.
Aye.
Backenstoss.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas. Lee.
Aye.
Carmen.
Aye.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Is this, is this, go back, just for conversation? No? I, okay, I want to just go back to, uh, create that paving district on eight-three-five. And I think that had some kind of interesting numbers there. If we do it now, or if we had postponed it and done it a couple of years, can we just look at that? We passed it already, so that's not a problem, but.
Sure, uh, for, for the benefit of the council, uh, the paving district on Reed Avenue, uh, I visited with Brent Berkland, the city engineer, and we were weighing the benefit of doing an overlay on Reed Avenue today versus waiting, uh, for potentially even as early as next year. But, uh, there was a suggestion that this would go on a one-and-six plan, which could put it six years out. Uh, we went over to Reed Avenue, the armor coat, which is the surface of the street, is, is clearly separating from the base layer of the asphalt. The asphalt that is below the armor coat, uh, will serve as a good base. If we pave, uh, Reed, if we just do an overlay of Reed Avenue today, uh, we're looking at a rough cost of two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, if we wait until next year, we could incur further damage to the street and thus, uh, potentially require a full replacement of the street. If replaced, we would likely utilize concrete, uh, and that, the cost of that replacement would be a million dollars. So we believe that, uh, Brent can speak to it too if he wishes, but we believe it's prudent to replace, uh, or do the overlay today, which will provide us a, a ten-to-fifteen-year lifespan on that street. Uh, and then the last topic would be, uh, construction escalation on average is about six percent per year, five to six percent per year. Right now, we issue a warrant and, uh, eventually roll this into the bonding process. We would, uh, our, our most recent issuance was about a two percent interest rate. Uh, so you can see that that offsets the, even, even the year-over-year cost escalation of the project. Brent, do you have anything to add?
Um, just one item. We did have some cores taken on the street. Um, we had four completed, and they averaged about eight and a half to nine inches of asphalt. And as information, it's an interesting piece of information, but it relates to what we're looking at. The, the street from the records we could find was approximately nineteen sixty-seven was approximately when that was done. So the asphalt is done extremely well for fifty-three years, and it's just, you know, at the end of its life. The cores that we took, three of them, were not the best condition as far as they crumbled. One of them came out like a regular core. And so that is a piece of the process that we're looking at. In that street area, it's clay underneath. And so it's good in that respect to have a flexible surface. The, the ground is probably a little more flexible as opposed to concrete. It would take more work. The, the ten-to-fifteen-year life versus, uh, that was one of the considerations, was the cost that we're looking at, um, in the environment that we're dealing with. If money was no object, let's tear it all out and start from the beginning, but money is a big object in our discussion, so.
And, thank you, Brent. My point was, I just think that was a really good investment.
I believe there was a motion to adjourn. Was there a second? Oh, we got that for.
I'll second.
Role call?
Missley.
Aye.
Backenstoss.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Lucas. Lee.
Aye.
Carmen.
Aye.
Reeker. Ostendorf.
Aye.
Motion.